I will call this meeting of the Blue Lake City Council to order. This is our regularly scheduled Tuesday, June twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. Meeting. Our first order of business is to call the meeting to order, which I did. Welcome everyone. And now join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you establish a quorum of the council, please?
May I, Joan?
Here.
May I, for council?
Present.
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Siffoni?
Here.
Councilmember Geiger?
Here.
And all are present. We are on item three, approval of the agenda. First to the council, is anyone that would like to move anything around?
Nope. Something about asking to have. The, um. Oh, shoot. Just thinking about having, never mind.
Well, it looks like all of the resolutions are in order and then. And then we'll discuss the town square. So it looks pretty good. Everyone's okay with it up here. I'll turn it up to public.
May I, Joan?
Yes.
Um, staff would like to pull number six, um, the uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four budget amendment. Um, we had, didn't have enough time to have that prepared and we still have some expenditures coming in that we want to evaluate for that amendment. So we'd like to pull that and we'll have that on for the next agenda.
Perfect. Okay, thank you for that, staff. All right, any other changes? deletions, corrections? Anything from public? I see a hand raised.
Yeah.
Julie, did you want to talk about the approval of the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. I would, um, like to ask if you have a representative there in person for the sheriff? And if so, if he could move, I believe it was item ten up. If not, um, it is going to take a lot of time to get through our other agenda items. That, um, if the council feels uncomfortable with moving that one up, that would be appreciated by me. I'm a little sick and I'd like to hear what's going on with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the sheriff supposed to be coming or the representative?
No. No.
Absolutely. Okay. Okay, well, we'll take that under advisement. Any other, uh, public comments about the agenda? Okay, back to council. Would anyone here like to move that up? I move to, um, approve the agenda, pulling number six. Second. Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Angela Schultz to approve the agenda as delivered and delete item six, resolution number one, two, three, one. Any further discussion from council? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. We are now on public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment? Okay, um, Scott and then Kent. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the city manager for pulling agenda item six. Um, that item didn't contain the amendments. So I would like to bring to your attention that the details are important. And that when it comes back to you, the public should have at least seventy-two hours to know what the changes are. They should be highlighted items when the item comes back to you. It doesn't make sense to have a resolution adopting amendments, but no one knows what the amendments are. Thank you.
Kent Swawsky had a very interesting supervisors meeting. I've never seen one as dysfunctional as that one was ever, since I've been there. Let's see, Mike Wilson didn't do too well at the meeting. He pulled two items off. Irritated the sheriff on both of them, I believe. And we're all quite aware of what resolution was done regarding the sheriff's contract. Um, I wish to make a comment. Uh, it's been made mentioned before that CDBG funds could not be dispersed in Blue Lake. And, and I have a document from one of the loan applications to the state of California Wildlife Conservation Board. And according to this project location done by staff here, according to the California DWR disadvantaged communities mapping tool, the city of Blue Lake and project area is located entirely within a disadvantaged community. The project is located within twenty miles of population approximately hundred thousand people, over fifty percent who reside in disadvantaged. And I thought that was what we were supposed to be using the money for was disadvantaged people, that money for CDBG funds. And I also had further communication today and have had it before with John Ford. The public county administers those projects totally for very little money. They do it for real deal. There's no reason that money is being, in my opinion, misappropriated for whatever the will of the city manager seems to think to fill funding gaps or to things. It's ridiculous. And of course, I will be going, uh, possibly the CBD. CDBG people have been misinformed when they say we don't have people who need this here. I can't see any other reason they would have allowed any money to be spent. So that will be being contacted possibly when you come to budget items, you might consider any of that money has been misappropriated, being clawed back, significant amount of money. And, uh, I highly recommend that you, uh, cease and desist from misappropriing the funds. I did also want to make mention, there's a schedule out here for the presidential general election, which applies to us. For, for people in, in the city of Blue Lake who wish to run for city council, strongly recommend a lot of you do. Uh, July fifteenth through August ninth is when you, a declaration of candidacy is. And then you have July fifteenth through August ninth deadline to file candidate statement. So there's a small window there. Everybody should be aware of it. Uh, for those of you who know people who may be willing to run, I highly recommend you do. Public participation is the best thing for the community and diversity. And sometimes it's time to make changes at the helm when things are being, uh, got handled correctly, in my opinion. Uh, let's see, what else? I don't know. I had, I had a, a document, maybe it's going to be read into the record. I don't know if we have it there, but I had something that I requested to be read into the record. It came in, I think, uh, around three oh nine and three ten to, uh, Honaly and to, uh, to the city manager. I think there's a deadline that would permit that to be read in. So if that is not something that you have to be ready, and I do have a copy of it. And when we reach that thing, then I'd be happy to go ahead and do that. I realize it's time. Thank you so much.
Just for the record, we do have the council correspondence and we usually do that during our item eleven council correspondence. Uh, Julie, did you have a public comment?
Yes, thank you, Julie Christie. Um, my voice is a little crummy, you guys, so I will try and speak slowly and loud and clear. Um, I'd like to confer with our first speaker and, um, Kent had a lot of valid points within his. I was able to view the supervisors meeting today as well. Um, um, I, we had a great, um, base in that room, so go Blue Lake. Um, I would also like to kind of congratulate some of our Mad River Valley youth that, um, showed at the Redwood Acres Fair. There was actually quite a few kids this last week that really did amazing. I'm just proud of them. I want to give them a shout out. Um, these are our future farmers and they're right here close to home. They're very special to me. Um, I'd like to give another shout out to Justin. Um, thank you for always being there. Um, we have still yet to be having meetings uploaded to access humble. And especially with an election coming in, um, Justin's archive is amazing. Um, it's so crucial that anybody that's running that hasn't been to prior meetings, hasn't been involved, that they get caught up. We know who's involved and I know there's a lot of other people that are interested that have not actually been involved. So it's a great resource to keep everybody up to date on what was said and what was done. But every time we neglect to do that, we're hiding public records. And I think it's very important that we always steward and a good way that we are transparent with our meetings. And I know commission meetings are bonuses, but we have a small town, busy, busy lives that it's greatly appreciated by the community. So I'll leave it at that tonight, girls and gentlemen. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll move on then to item five, resolution number twelve thirty, a resolution of the city council of the city of Blue Lake requesting the consolidation of the general municipal election with the statewide general election to be held Tuesday, November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. And this is, um, a request from staff that the council authorized to consolidate the, our elections with statewide elections and there's no fiscal, uh, impact. In fact, it would be more of an impact. I think if we didn't do this, it would be more expensive for us not to. So, um, I'll open it up for council to question or comment on this agenda item.
Uh, I make a motion that we adopt resolution number twelve thirty.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, there's a motion and a second. I am going to open it up to public. So if there's no other comments from council, would the public like to weigh in on this? Uh, Mr. Swawsky?
Yeah, before, as I just mentioned, you're consolidating our election in November and we have some deadlines here. I did want to make a comment regarding me being cut off very rudely a minute ago. The timer's supposed to be out here, so I can see it. And so I can see the timer, uh, and if you expect me to adhere to my time limits, then that should be visible to the audience. I know no other forum where it's not made visible. Uh, people like, uh, who are on Zoom should have, be very politely say your time's up because they can't see that timer. Or they should be given a thirty-second warning. That's standard process. Uh, frequently a supervisor will go thirty seconds, nice and quietly, so the person can, can see how much time they have left. Um, otherwise I consider that chilling to, to make the public feel like they shouldn't be speaking here and that's very rude. So I did wish to highly recommend, we do consolidate elections for just the reason you said. The savings, great. If we have to have special elections, sometimes it's extremely expensive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this and thank you for letting me see the timer.
Is there any other public comment on this item? Okay, back to council. We had a motion by Christopher Edgar, seconded by Elise Siffoni. Any further discussion from council? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to item six.
Item six.
Item six has been pulled. Thank you. Item seven. Resolution number one, two, three, two, SB one funding and project adoption. The city of Blue Lake will receive funding from the state of California Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation SB one program. The city's projected funding allocation for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five is approximately twenty-nine thousand dollars. Each year, the city is required to adopt a resolution that establishes the upcoming fiscal year's funding allocation and identifies a project list for use of the funds. Each year, city staff makes a recommendation to the city council based upon the highest needs and the most effective use of the funds. As the funding allocation is limited, city staff is recommending that the funding be allocated to road, regular work on G Street, repair work on G Street and First Avenue. Work recommended includes pavement replacement, pothole repair, and accessibility improvements. As work is currently taking place in the area of G Street and First Avenue, the city can leverage the SB one funding to make larger repairs in the area. City staff makes this recommendation based upon the city's pavement index report, along with recommendations by the city engineer. Did staff want to make any further comments on this?
Um, no, so this is just some yearly funding that we receive. It's a fairly small amount, but we do add it to our usual maintenance operations. It's usually enough to, um, do small repairs, maintenance, um, pothole filling, um, this year because we do have work going on around the town square. Um, we have some areas in that, um, that general vicinity that have some substantial wear to the road system. And so we're recommending, um, leveraging the, the work that's being done um, with this funding to make a larger repair that we normally wouldn't be able to do, but because the contractors are already mobilized, um, there's asphalt coming in. Um, it makes sense to be able to take advantage of those, um, cost-effective measures.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for staff from council before I open it up to public? Okay, we'll open it up to public. Is there anyone that would like to weigh in? I see Julie's hand and then Kent. Go ahead, Julie.
Yes, you guys, I, I've got a helicopter going over me in the bar right now. Uh, oh my gosh, and my dog. So now I'm going to get to the point. Um, we've got to decide on these streets. Yes, it makes sense, but if we want to talk about impact, we have major impact on A, B, and C avenue with everybody that's having to pull out and go around all the constructions that are happening. I've seen the degradation to it since schools been out and going to help pick up at, at this school program right now. Glendale got the same problem when they keep closing the offerings. Glendale is shocked. We need as much support from our city as we can to get Glendale fixed. You want people and kids to be able to walk out of their houses and move safely? They don't need to go down the highway and, and try and buy property off me to do that. And they need to fix Glendale, but same thing with us. We have things within our city that I know that section and we have asphalt now. But I feel like it's another beautification project. I hate to say it. We've got a lot of other spots in town that are deteriorating more significantly and faster with this point that we're just going to continually be having these projects for several months. So as much as we want to throw some funding out right now towards a certain project, um, are we going to have funding to then fund what needs going to be fixed after all the construction that's happening on Greenwood? That's going to happen. It's going to need to happen. So how are we going to do that? So let's plan ahead a little bit and focus on infrastructure.
Thank you. Kent?
I have a very simple yes or no question for staff. Is any of this money going to be used for any way, shape, or form for speed humps, ball bouts, uh, roundabouts, or new stop signs? Some of those, us have major concerns regarding some of those particular uses. Just so you know, there's a warrant process when you want to put a stop sign in, which hasn't been observed. And, uh, that I think is thought within two years, you're to have five accidents. Or else you have to do a traffic study and you have to have the strips and have to, have to justify putting a stop sign in. So we may be, uh, taking quite a few of them out that we haven't followed that process. I just want to, yes or no question whether, whether that would be, uh, any of the money be used for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, back to council.
I motion to approve resolution number twelve thirty-two.
Second.
I'd like to ask the question that Mr. Swawsky posed. Um, is any of this money going to be for ball bouts, roundabouts, stop signs, speed bumps?
No.
Can you tell us what it is going to be used for?
It's going to be used for paving and pothole repair, as identified in the project.
Mm-hmm, and I understand the intersection, are we talking about a few blocks in either direction or? Where, how far are we going?
So it's about twenty-nine thousand dollars. It doesn't go very far. So, and we don't, um, quantify pothole repair, um, based upon the number of potholes we fill. It's just the, the amount of material that we can acquire and then we apply it to the areas of the road that need the work.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor made by Christopher Edgar, seconded by Elizabeth McKay. Any further discussion from council? Let's get those potholes filled, huh? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Resolution number one, two, three, three is our item eight. A resolution of the city council adopting a fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five budget, and this is an action item. The city accountant, who is here with us, thank you, will present the city's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five budget for council's review and consideration of adoption. The draft budget was presented to council on June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and all funds and departments were presented and reviewed by the city accountant. And we have our budget here and we have our accountant here. So we will proceed. All our ducks lined up.
All right, um, just wanted to kind of go over the highlights of some of the changes. Um, so.
Are these, I'm sorry, are these changes from two weeks ago or?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, we added a budget narrative. We added, added some graphs. Um, the GAN limit was added as well as, um, the salary and wage schedule. Um, there were a few number changes. We look at page twenty-one. So the first thing, um, there was a, an error. There was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the transfer in for the sewer operating fund, number seventy. So that was something carrying over from the prior year. So that was removed.
Um, what page are you on? I'm sorry.
The new budget or the prior?
The one in the fourth pocket. This is the new one. This is tonight's budget.
Um, additionally, um, Elise had made a comment on, on the funding of, um, some of the sewer capital items. So instead of showing that as a transfer out and, and then bringing it into the sewer operating fund, I broke it out and showed it down below is actually a capital expenditure of the sewer capital reserve fund.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
The mic isn't doing anything. It's recording it.
It's just recording. You have to speak out.
It's not going to amplify your voice.
Um, and then at the same time, um, we had a question, um, from council about, um, some salary and wage, uh, changes for a couple of the funds. So I did some analysis and it looks like there was consideration, double consideration of, um, some callback type salaries and wages or on-call type salaries and wages. So as a result, um, the water operating fund sixty, there would be a reduction to the, uh, salaries and wages of about eleven thousand. As well as for the sewer operating fund, number seventy, there will be a reduction of about eleven thousand. Um, the next item that changed is going to be on page twenty. Or that will change. Um, so with the supplemental law enforcement fund, um, we had projected a carryover into fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five of about sixteen thousand. Um, but it looks like that's going to be a zero carryover from fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
That's fund thirty-three?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that projected fund balance will be zero. And then the, um, the expenses for fund thirty-three will drop by about sixteen thousand, since the general fund is going to have to pick that up. So if you look at page nineteen, um, the law enforcement line item will increase by about sixteen thousand.
So the term side is on the bottom of the page. You're on the wrong page then.
Well, I'm having a hard time running. I guess you're going, so.
I'm going backwards from page twenty-one.
Don't be an asshole. Jesus. I'm having a hard time. I'm trying to copy down what I'm saying.
Excuse me, but at this point, I have to interject. That I do not tolerate cussing.
I do not tolerate being bullied when I'm sitting at this table.
No one is bullying anyone, okay? Let's all just calm down.
So I think that's all that I have to say. Is there anything that you want to add, Mandy, to?
Um, no, I think, I think that's, I think that's good.
Can I have a question real quickly?
Sure.
So back on page four, now I got to find page four, um, there on the transportation component, um, there was a notice on there that is still listed that Blue Lake Rancheria as being our transportation contract. Are they, they ceased, they ceased their transportation component. So should that?
Yeah, we can update that. And I also saw that the, um, the name of our law firm has also changed to Mitchell Law Firm, so we'll make that change.
That was good. Thank you so much.
Good call. Thanks.
So which page is it?
Page four. Okay, uh, any other questions or comments?
I have quite a few questions going through the document. Um, but I'll let everybody else ask questions first.
No, you can go ahead.
Could you speak a little louder?
Sure, sorry. Um, I was just saying, I have a lot of questions, but I didn't want to hog the floor if other people have questions first.
Go ahead. What page are you on and what are your questions?
So I'm on page twenty-three.
Okay.
And, um, I'm just basically going to start at the top and go through because I had so many things that, um, that came up when I was looking through the document. So, um, I noticed in the first section of tax revenue, we did have some increases in our revenues, um, over expected for last year. So those same figures, it looks like, are carrying forward to, uh, next year. And, um, one of the questions I had, um, has to do with that increase. So there's roughly a maybe I'm wrong. I'm, I'm thinking there's something in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars in tax revenues that we received this year that were over budget. Is that about right? There's like a hundred thousand in sales and, and use tax. And then in property tax, I guess there's only about thirty thousand.
So, yeah, there, there is, um, the projected actuals greater than what was budgeted for last year.
Right? Um, and are those the only tax revenues that are greater than expected from this past year? Do we have any other significant increases?
No.
Um, I really, um, I noticed that our, our budget overrun from last year is about the same as projected, but then we did have these, um, additional income streams, um, higher than expected. So I'm wondering where those extra a hundred and thirty some odd dollars were spent. And I guess we can't look at that tonight because we don't have the amended budget.
Yeah, so that'd be, that'd come forward with the amended budget at the next meeting.
And do we have any? Do we have any idea where that money went?
A lot of it, um, various departments within the general fund, um, that's, um, yeah, so I, I don't have the details in front of me right now, but that would be my, my general response.
Okay. And maybe you could talk a little bit about, I, I'm just like comparing columns here, um, budgeted for last year, actual for this year, uh, for last year and then going forward. And sometimes it seems like we're, we're just taking the actual and we're moving forward and sometimes we're not. Um, and that being as there's not any, you know, um, explanation as to why we're going up or down or sideways. Is there a basic principle that you can apply to all of these columns or are we looking more closely at each item to decide which one is going to get, is going to be up, down, or sideways?
Well, a lot of these items are estimates based on, um, historical data. Um, some, uh, some of the items have a component of inflation or increases, um. So that's a lot of the differential in, in these items. Um, some of these items, um, are known amounts. And so that, that could also contribute to, um, the differences.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, on page twenty-four, there's other state grants and the, and so the budget and the actual for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four was at two seventy-seven, six forty-one.
Was at two seventy-seven, six forty-one, but then the budget is showing a million five and I'm wondering why that's so much.
So that is going to be, um. The STIP grant, which is going to fund the improvements on Greenwood, right?
Okay, thank you.
And so the two seventy-seven, some of that is the, um, the park grant, the one seventy-seven of the park grant that was expended last year.
Um, the two seventy-seven is going to be, um. Some of it's going to be STIP funding, um, some of it's going to be. Leap and reap funding, I believe. So, yeah, the state parks monies that were spent are in fund. It's eleven, no, probably twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve. So these are, these are other state revenues that had other purposes.
Okay. And are we still getting those same grants, um, coming in for this year, are they part of the one point five?
Um, the one point five, I believe, is just the construction phase of the, um, Greenwood Improvement Project. So, um, yeah, those, those other, um. Dollars are, you know, a one-time item.
Okay.
Yeah. I know. I have a real, I have a real issue with abbreviations too, so STIP stands for. State Transportation Improvement Pro- Program, okay, LEAP. I know.
Yeah. Local something assistance program.
Right.
And the other is the Regional Assistance Program.
Reap, yeah. I know, uh, and HCOG. The HCOG director has a wonderful cheat sheet of just all of the abbreviations. And coming out of education, some of us know what.
Degree, there was a whole class on acronyms.
Yeah, yeah.
An entire class.
So, um, I don't have my.
Yeah.
Your point is well taken.
And the director of HCOG says it only takes a few more syllables to say the whole thing out loud and just, you know. Give the whole word and all the words and not just call it that, but anyway, okay, um. So, uh, you have more questions, Elise?
I think I do.
What page are you on, still on twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Okay.
So in Parks and Rec, um. Do we have, um. Any, um, any additional information to, to talk about why the skating and park fees are expected to be. Fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand dollars higher than, um, than this year?
So I think the Park and Rec Department is planning for some growth. In the, um, skating program.
Okay. And what about the, um. The concessions going from sixteen to nineteen thousand, is that, it, I guess down from twenty-one thousand projection from last year?
Yeah, so I think that kind of follows with this increase in, in the skate program.
So do we have any, I wonder, any, um, cost benefit type accounting for Parks and Rec or, um. Or the recreation programs where we know how much of. How much money is actually coming from our general fund to support those programs versus those, uh, fees. Coming back to offset expenditures.
I mean, revenues coming in?
Right.
Yes, all the revenues are broken out.
Parks and recreational piece, uh, that she's questioning, is that revenue coming in? Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions?
You should open the public.
I have a, I have something, I'm wondering, page thirteen seems to be showing deficit, 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 and I'm wondering. That's not what we want to see.
So, you know. The first graph, which is the ABA nine thirty-nine solid waste reduction and recycling funds. As well as the third graph, which is the Regional Surface Transportation Fund. There's a loss because there's a carry, there's projected to be a carryover from fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So we're just utilizing those special revenue funds in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five to bring the fund balance to zero.
Okay.
Um, the law enforcement graph, that, that will be zero, um, once we make that change.
Okay. Okay, if there are no more questions from council, um, and we can continue this discussion afterwards. Um, I'm asking now if there's anyone from the public that would like to weigh in on our fiscal year twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I see a hand, Julie.
Thank you, um, if it's appropriate, can I clarify if this is an action or discussion item?
What, what was that?
Okay, so, thank you, thank you very much. Because I am concerned that we had no packet material as public. And it sounds like there's also not packet material within our public in attendance. That's not seventy-two hour notice and I don't feel comfortable with that. Um, I am very proud of Elise as usual, um, for asking questions. I would like to thank Jackson and Eklin, um, you guys are a great firm, I have a lot of faith in you. However, I'm going to go back what I said last month. We've already requested a lot of things as public and council in the past to be more itemized. Perhaps we don't need to be paying our firm to be doing that, that is something that I believe staff should already have on hand. Projecting these projects and it should be easily available within, um, manager reports. That as we're progressing through these projects with a grant funded specifically and general funds and everything. They can be itemized within that in a little graph, let's see where we're at every month with the funds that we have here and there. Um, I, I will give up some packet materials, we could focus on that, just to be honest. Um, but it's hard to make an action item this evening when your public really can't give any supportive, um, reply. Except for getting to get some more knowledge through one council member that actually asked some good questions. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Scott and then Kent and then Becky.
Thank you. As you can see, Scott Fraser Blue Lake, there appears to be a fair amount of interest in the budget and in the details of the budget. But there's also some confusion. And I'd like to call out a separate item, which is when your accountant says that different departments within the general fund have used this. Overspending from the budget because there was increased revenue. It's, it seemed like the tracking of the revenue as it comes in, particularly if it comes in above your budget is an issue. So the public's interested in this, and I'd like to suggest that you carry this forward to the next meeting unless you have a statutory requirement for adopting it tonight.
Kent.
Well, part of the confusion is here that, um, and I'm going to let Chris take a look at this. You can find some numbers on there for the pages because we couldn't follow, follow that, that's we got, you might have got numbered pages we. So anyway, it was impossible for us to follow your discussion again for the same, that reason and the same reason that Scott mentioned. That, uh, there is no timeline on this thing, there's no reason you can't carry this forward, if you need to have a special meeting, you can have a special meeting. Um, I see no reflection in the action that we've taken today, which I think all of you are quite obvious. That the sheriff's budget has been totally, uh, redone. That the, uh, the sheriff has said we will be paying eighty thousand dollars, I can't remember, uh, your city manager said we have the money, we're going to pay this amount. Up to, I think, a hundred and forty-six, I'm not sure exactly what it was. You've got a major, you've, you've got eight percent of your budget here that has to be redone just strictly upon what happened today. Um, and I have major concerns, I have not been able to get answers to my public records requests. And I wonder if you folks know how much you're actually paying or how the structure is for what I call workman's comp, my understanding you have a fund. Uh, those are the numbers we need to know that I couldn't get the answers to. Uh, we, I feel that a whole bunch more money, a significant amount of money may be paying into workman's comp unnecessarily. The rate for clerical, as far as I can tell, maybe like twenty percent, the rate for sewer and water might be sixty-five percent. So you have a whole bunch of money which you probably could be saving there, and without those facts and figures, I don't see how you can do a budget. Uh, hopefully we will be able to save a significant amount of money in the future by going ahead and putting those into the correct account and making sure that happens, but. Lack of our ability to even follow anything you were saying today is, is basically kind of throwing in our face as far as transparency goes. I can see the clock there, I got a minute until this. I find it distressing, um, that so many things are already answered, uh, so many things as far as what's here and, and we can't follow anything, so. Thank you for my opportunity to, oh, I didn't, I have one thing last, last couple of minutes, seconds here. Um, I did not see anything in there regarding the. Aaron McClure tank lease or acquisition in there, and I, I think that's something you have a timeline on to do. Uh, I don't know how you're budgeting this, but your attorney does have a figure he's fixed upon, although it's ridiculously low in my opinion. And I, I don't know how you're, how you, I don't see anything in their budgeting for any kind of a lease or acquisition or whatever is going to be proposed. Uh, even though you do have some tentative figures you'd like to throw out there, um, and I would hope maybe somebody else from the audience can address that, that situation, thank you, Mark, can you speak?
Is there, oh, I'm sorry, Becky, go ahead.
Um, I just want to agree with Scott Kent, and I don't think this should go forward right now. Because after watching the supervisors meeting and just listening to all of the questions, but no answers really given. It seems that you can't ever get a straight answer from anything. Every public record request that I've asked for, say with, you know, a grant and what your expenditures are, I'm denied those. Um, so I'm just hearing a lot of, oh, well, money is just put here or there, or it's given to this or given to that, so where's it really going to? Um, I think we need a little more clarification of that too, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, Jean?
Um, I wanted to know, excuse me, Jean, I wanted to know about the Greenwood project. Um, and the resurfacing and the bulbouts and such are through a grant. I think it have a million and a half dollars for that, but I understand that the water project and the replacement of the, the water, uh. Lines is a separate. Fund, I'm not sure where the, uh, payment for that is from, it, it's not within the. The grant, is it, or is it? Anybody know?
No, it isn't, it's not within that same grant that's.
Where does the money for that come from, what fund?
Supposed to come out of sewer and water.
So that would be sixty?
Sixty and seventy, I believe.
Sixty and seventy?
But I don't, those are, are the, is that money projected to come out in twenty-four, twenty-five or in twenty-three, twenty-four? Okay, and I don't believe the council ever saw a, um, the bid for that project. I know we were, um, the bid estimate from SHN was for four hundred and thirty-five thousand, if I remember correctly. But I don't know what the bid that was awarded came in at. Did we have that figure?
We had that figure.
Yeah, we got it.
It wasn't presented to us, no, it wasn't.
Is that included in?
RAO was awarded that bid, but we don't know what that, what, what that bid came in at, as far as I know.
Is that included in seventy, in fund seventy, the expenditure?
I think, I think what, what they're saying is that it's going to be in our amended budget from twenty-three, twenty-four, but it won't be in your packet. Cause we, we only have twenty-four, twenty-five tonight in our packet.
So this isn't a complete budget?
Well, it's not last year's.
Next year's not ending this.
Not last year's. Yeah.
So any deficit, deficits, overflow?
Yeah, budget amendments, as you remember on the city council when you were on the council.
Okay, so we have four hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we're still looking at for. Improvements. That will come in next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so did you want to answer any of the questions that were posed this evening?
So the water lateral project was in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Um, the water lateral project was brought to council as part of a twenty-three, twenty-four budget amendment request. Um, you were presented with the project scope, um, and allowed the, um, allowed myself and the city engineer to go out to bid for that. And to authorize a contract, um, within a, um, a set dollar amount, up to a set dollar amount. Um, so that project has been awarded and I believe that they will be paving Greenwood starting tomorrow, um, to finish that project. And then we'll be going into the Greenwood project, which is funded by the, um, state of California, it's a one point five million dollar construction project. That project also went out to bid, um, RAO was awarded that construction project that was brought back to council for authorization as well. Um, so that project will be starting, um. The lateral project will be brought back to you during the budget amendment, um, process. Although we did, uh, receive authorization prior from council to move that project forward.
Do you recall the, the dollar figure that came?
It was a little over three hundred thousand, it was under the engineer's estimate.
All right, any other questions of staff? We have a protocol.
Well, you've already had one, we can't, can't do two, otherwise then we have to go around for everybody.
We're a council.
Yes, we work together.
If we allow someone to just continue to ask questions and up and down, it's going to open it up. Okay, I'm sure staff will. Will be able to answer that question for you. Um, and just to get everybody on the same page here, a budget is a blueprint. But it's really more of an estimate of what is going to happen, I mean, we had some surprises last year. We had over thirty thousand dollars in our tax, retail tax revenue, which we've never had, and that was a good surprise. So there will be surprises, I've been through this budget process a long time for many, many sessions of it. And there, you know, there are good and bad surprises, unfortunately, the, the bad ones come up as well. And, and then there's a process for that, so it's just like your budgets at home when you find out what. Acts, the actuality is and you have to make your adjustments, so. Um, that's how I view the budget and I appreciate the staff's work on this, particularly our accountant, thank you for that. Um, what's the pleasure of the council?
I have a few more questions.
Okay.
Um, I'm on page twenty-five.
Okay.
And I'm looking at, um, general government, department one eighty under utilities. So we, um, had a, um, projection last year of seven, seven, seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And we spent forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. So I'm wondering if we could get a little explanation of that jump. Because then we're budgeting back to eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars for this year, for next year.
There was a grant through, um. It's a Clean California Grant for, um, like a Waste Disposal Day. And so that is why the projected actual is so much higher because that. Is a, was a one-time. Is a was a one-time event.
Okay.
It was through Caltrans.
Okay.
So Caltrans reimbursed the city for that expenditure.
And that program has been eliminated.
The Clean California.
Clean California is done with.
That's a shame.
It is. There's a lot of ex coworkers who are being bounced around because of that.
Okay, interesting. Thanks for that information.
So I would like to share just a general comment. I looked at this budget. I looked at a budget for Trinidad. I looked at a budget for Eureka. I looked at several past years of budgets for Blue Lake. And I found that. I found understanding this budget to be pretty challenging. I've spent quite a few hours on it. And I spent quite a few hours on it last year. And then I go on to a budget like Trinidad's that has an explanation on every line item. And I think, wow, that's really, really easy to understand because as I go down the page, I have an explanation of why. The numbers from last year are changing this year and what the, you know. And what has happened to to make these these things, these trends go up and down. And then going back to old Blue Lake. Records. I think some of those pages were were initialed AS, so I'm assuming that was April Souza. And there was some trends that were presented in those budgets that were really helpful. In understanding what was going on there. And so, I mean, while while these pages in the front that talk about what each of these budget items or funds are. These are great for background information, but when we look at each line item and each fund going into the budget. We don't have any explanation of why the numbers are going up or down or sideways, or if this is a normal trend. We don't have any history other than last year. So if you want to try to track and go, well, is twenty-three, twenty-four similar to the years previous? Is this a normal trend for it to go up or to go down? You have to dig out lots and lots of documents and go one page at a time to figure out what's normal. Or try to figure out what's normal. And even then, you don't know because we don't have explanations in here. So. I think that it shouldn't be so hard to understand the budget. I think that our budget is stripped down to a point where. The only way we can discern what the changes are or why they are is to ask in a meeting like this. Which is very laborious and and hard to track as everyone is is expressing. And it's hard to track for me. I mean, when you got started, I was like a page behind and you made a couple comments and I didn't get them down. I didn't find the right column. And so I'm, I still don't know what they were exactly. Because I was behind what you were speaking about. So. I would really like for our budgets to look different. I would really like for our budgets to have different comparisons of per of trends and percentages from year to year. And all kinds of different things that are that existed in in older budgets and and that exist in other in other budgets, municipal budgets that are. You know, that are out there available for folks to look at. I feel, I feel like to go forward with this budget tonight, having not seen the amended twenty-three, twenty-four budget is just. Doesn't make sense. Doesn't make any sense to go into next year not knowing how we ended this year or how we're ending this year. And there's just too many questions about twenty-three, twenty-four. Left hanging. And so I personally think that we should be carrying this forward to this month.
I think with what you're asking, it would have been a very. Large amount of paperwork to have budgets from past years.
No, that's I'm not asking to.
Well, that's that's what you were saying at the beginning. You wanted to see all the past budgets, you know.
Defense. She's not asking for a complete tragedy.
I see.
She's asking, like, we had twenty-twenty-three versus a twenty-twenty-five. So there was two and a half years of budget going in. She would like more than that. So instead of having three columns, she might want five or six columns of the last maybe four or five years.
All right.
Not a whole budget.
And particularly as it relates to grant trends. And I get that. I mean, living in the grant world, grant trends are kind of a nightmare. Like, I get that makes sense.
And a few questions that were asked here, and I agree. Some of the the higher, like, why is it so different? Well, I don't think we should have we have to ask, why is it so different? There should be something in there that says, well, we're missing this grant. I think that grant, if it's the grants in there from the previous year, we're not going to get it the next year. That should be noted somewhere with a asterisk or something, so we know why there's such a drastic change from. An eight hundred thousand dollar budget down to a three hundred thousand dollar budget.
Agreed. It's, yeah, it's it's so much easier when you're seeing graphs and pie charts and things that have ten years. And they show this is where we're going. And this is, you know, this is where we've been and this is where we think we're going. You know, you can track these things, like, we can spend a lot of time asking a lot of questions about changes, but if we had those kinds of graphs. We might see, oh, that's pretty normal for that to happen. So it just. You know, we're not accountants. We're trying to do the responsible thing by passing a budget we can understand. And and I think that we could accomplish that with some changes in format of our budget. So that's my comment there. And I I'd like to move that we carry this this budget adoption into next month.
Here's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
If we do it next month, we can do it at the same time that we're looking at the amended twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And we can have a better all-around picture of what we're doing, where we've been and where we're going.
It looks like the motion fails.
Well, then I have some more questions.
Okay.
How significant are the amendments? Twenty-three, twenty-four?
I think that there's going to be some significant amendments. I think a lot of it surrounds. Projects that came about that were cost recovery in nature. Like the PG&E. Project. Stuff to do with the Vanco project.
Yeah, I don't think the amendments are necessarily issues of concern. You know, when you pick up projects in the middle of a fiscal year, there's cost recovery associated with that. So it's not a negative for the city. We also have amendments to increase revenues, decrease some projections for parks and recreation. But overall, you know, there it's it's not a significant amount of like bad things for the city. You know, when you make amendments, if you bring on a grant in the middle of a year, we need to make an amendment. If there's additional revenues captured, we need to make an amendment. So amendments aren't aren't necessarily a bad thing. They they're just part of the process of doing business and when funds and projects come come in. There is some amendment to parks and recreation projections for revenue. We had some impacts this year during course of construction that shut the the skating rink down for a longer period of time than we'd anticipated. So there's some projections that needed to be changed for that. But overall, I think I think the 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 funds and, you know, are solid. And, you know, it's not anything to to be nervous about. And I think this budget is, you know, this is a good, this is good for the city. These are, these are good numbers. You know, there's not thing, there's, you know, Scott and I spend a lot of time working on the budget and looking at, you know, making projections and looking at prior years. And doing all the things that you're asking about. That's the job, really, the role of staff is to really dig into those those numbers. It's not necessarily the role of the council to to dig into those numbers to that extent. You're looking at a larger vision based upon, you know, what staff is bringing to you. Scott is a contract employee that reports directly to you guys. He's not, you know, he doesn't work under me. He's presenting you the best information going forward for the city's operating budget. And a lot of our stuff doesn't really change. You know, we're we're pretty static in a lot of ways. We have pretty much the same staffing levels. We have the same, a lot of the same revenues. A lot of the same programs. So there's not a lot of changes. And even when you do see changes, you know, they they're fairly minor. And when you do see an anomaly like the Clean California grant, that's also backed up with the revenue coming in to replace that expenditure. So, you know, questions can definitely be asked, but I don't know that it's necessarily. Needed to be able to understand this to the minute detail. And fund accounting is complicated. And we've said that it's not as simple as. Basic bookkeeping. That's not how the city operates. That's not how municipal governments operate. So it is a different way of looking at revenues and expenditures and making projections. And that's why you have qualified staff. You know, to to walk you through that and answer questions.
I I personally would really like to have our next budget passed before the end of this year, of this fiscal year, which is in five days. So and I've been on the council many times where that has not occurred. And so I have to commend staff for that as well, because I've been on council where this has not been ready in time and we've had to carry it over. But I'm I'm really comfortable with the level of accuracy on this. And the questions that have been asked and answered, that I would love to see this pass tonight so that we can actually have a budget on time.
So I'm on page twenty-six, Public Works, Department three twenty. Contracted professional services. We went from twenty-five thousand to fifty-one thousand, back down to eight thousand. Was there a big project that happened in twenty-three, twenty-four that won't happen because of that? In the upcoming year?
Project? Yeah. So that's going to be the PG&E project that happened, which is a primarily a cost recovery project. So there will be offsetting revenues.
And I thought it was interesting that that staff wages and salaries is actually projected to go down. Why is that? Are are we reducing staffing? It seems like we're we have the same amount of staffing from one year to the next.
I suspect it has to do with staff time to kind of monitor that PG&E project that was going on. So there will be less time managing that project. But that's a Mandy question. Mandy, is that?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a little bit of overlap right now in in Public Works. We are doubled up on on some staff right now that we won't be doubled up on going into twenty-four, twenty-five. You know, it's it's like a four thousand dollar, maybe five thousand dollar difference in.
Right. But with the with the wages going up, it seems like that wouldn't go down.
Just depends on how we're allocating staff to projects and programs and what our projections are and how much time we're projecting that we'll spend on streets. And what kind of revenue and grants we have available to to make any improvements.
And with newer staff, calpers contributions go down too, right?
There is a difference in calpers, definitely.
It's a percentage.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like stirs.
So. I'm curious, last year, we with less income than we're we're expecting for next year. We had a higher. A higher surplus than we're expecting for this year. Can we talk about that? Are there any general trends or certain expenditures that are going to eat up that extra money?
Well, I know for sure utility costs are extremely high, and that has been a big hit for us this year that we had not anticipated. Utility costs across the board are affecting all of our facilities and our operations by a lot. That's a a cost increase. We are going in again to twenty-four, twenty-five in some departments with double staffing. And we'll be looking at reallocating staff as we get further into the fiscal year. We always project for increases to wages for staff. Everyone is, we build that into the budget. There's, you know, there's, there are always things, you know, cost of everything goes up. And so that, you know, when it's spread across a larger programs, that has a higher impact. IT services go up, the need for new equipment, like I said, utility costs. Just across the board, there's an inflationary factor that gets 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 placed on the budget.
Health insurance is projected to go up about ten percent.
Did you have any other questions, Ellie?
Well, I did look at the the wage progression. That's that's part of this budget, right? So I went back to to twenty nineteen. And looked at wages and how they changed from that point forward. And it looks like they're not changing in a in a. In an equal fashion to all the different job categories. There was one year where there weren't any changes, or there was maybe one change for one job category, but. And then there was one year where everybody got a seven percent COLA increase. So I'm wondering what the what the process is for looking at wages and when and how and why do they get adjusted?
So we evaluate each year our staffing plan. We also have to factor in for minimum wage increases. And making sure that our programs and our staffing is competitive with other municipalities and other programs. But we also have to be cognizant of cost restrictions and especially when it comes to parks and recreation. We hire a lot of young staff and, you know, the the minimum wage going up to sixteen dollars. We had to drop off a couple of lines on that schedule to be able to reflect that. But also keeping in line with the fact that we are hiring a lot of young kids, basically, for different positions. And so not being able to burden programs with higher wages in in some areas. So everything is evaluated based upon a comparison. Like I said, to be able to keep staff, replace staff and to project for longevity. So we do go through a process to look at that and make those evaluations. We also plug that into our salary staffing plan to look at the progression of employees. And thinking about how employees are growing and they're growing in their capacity. Or if we're looking at making changes to staffing and their staffing duties as as needed. As the city changes and needs of the community change. So that's all taken into consideration and reflected in that salary schedule.
So the young, the younger folks that work for parks, is that a rec specialist?
Usually it's a rec specialist or a recreation coordinator.
So have you done a like a full class in comp or you just do one job category at a time?
It depends. We have, it depends on what the trends are for those different programs and classes of staffing. There's different classes on there that we don't use regularly, so they're not necessarily a priority. We have worked over the years to bring our salary schedule up to a more comparable and equitable. Rate for our employees, knowing that we do have employees that are moving out of the system. And being able to attract new employees to the city and being able to retain them and making long-term investments. Something that we wanted to get our salary schedule on track to be reflective of that need. And also being cognizant of, like I said, some of our recreation programs where, you know, we're hiring much younger youth. More unskilled labor at that point. And so that needs to be reflected in that wage. And also being cognizant of the fact that our recreation programs don't bring in a ton of revenue. So being able to balance the the revenues and expenditures is really critical.
Do do long-term employees get a raise every year?
We budget for a step increase every year, yes.
So like this year where we're having increases in each step, anybody who's like, if they're at a step five or a level five. So like this year where we're having, um, increases in each step, anybody who's like, if they're at a step five or a level five, they'll get, do they stay at level five or they?
They'll be adjusted. They'll be adjusted to be as close to the current salary as reflected in that schedule. So we have a few employees that will be adjusted by a penny just because our salary schedule, the way it's been developed. Um, the formula has a, um, a consistent kind of rounding factor built into it. So once we adopt a salary schedule, we have to go back and do PAFs for all employees that have to be allocated to the the closest, um, reflective pay schedule as they are currently.
What's, what is it? What'd you say, an RAF?
PAF.
RAF.
Personal action form.
So say if somebody's at a level five and the, and the rate is eighteen sixty-four, but then that's, that level five is going to become one T thirty-seven, they're not going to get the raise? They're going to drop down?
Right. Their level will change.
So when does that person get the raise?
They get it on their anniversary date.
Okay. And what about merit increases? Do employees get merit increases?
Um, we have proposed in the past opportunities through employment, um, looking at opportunities to grow capacity, training, taking on, um, additional skills and tasks. Um, that's something that can be considered. Um, that's something that's usually negotiated, um, upon hiring.
And for folks that have been with the city for ten or twelve years or something, how does, I mean, if it wasn't negotiated when they got hired, how does that work?
Um, they progress across the table accordingly.
Did the council have any other questions or comments? Are we ready to take some action this evening? It's the pleasure of the council. I don't usually make motions, but I'm inclined to make one to pass this resolution tonight. And see what happens. So here I go. Um, and I said I don't usually do this. Chairs usually do not make motions, but I will in this case, it's just even happens. Actually, I can make a motion when we have this form of city government, when the mayor is chosen amongst the five of us. This is not, uh, yeah, it's not separately elected, like in Eureka where she has to break a tie or something like that. So my motion is to adopt resolution number one, two, three, three, a resolution of the city council adopting a fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget.
I'll second it. Before we take a vote, I'd like to note that we did the same thing last year. And we had the same conversation about a budget being a fluid document and that amendments and changes could happen over time. But we, in twelve months' time, did not go back and look at that budget again. And so I can appreciate what you're saying, that this is a fluid document and amendments and adjustments can happen over time. But for whatever reason, and I, and I brought it to, brought it up at future agenda items, uh, numerous times, that we should do a midterm, take a midterm look at our budget and we never did. So, um, I take exception to going forward with this when we have so many unanswered questions and we don't seem to be willing to do a midterm evaluation of the budget.
Well, we still have a chance to do that. We're not at the midterm yet.
I'd like to make a comment too. Uh, we have gone through the budget multiple times. Uh, Mandy, roughly last year, how many budget amendments did we have?
Um, we brought to you a few projects that would amend the budget. Um, each time we changed, um, you know, asked for a change to a project or to add a project, we brought that to council for authorization. It just hasn't been encapsulated in a year-end amendment, but you did approve each one of those actions separately.
Yeah.
Right, but we never looked at the whole budget.
We're always looking through the budget. I mean, I am, I've always.
A living, breathing.
I'm always looking at the budget.
Budget, and then we have budget amendments throughout the year. Um, I don't know, I think I remember there might be six that we voted on and they all, there was no nays during that. Um, budget amendments that I can remember, I would have to go back through the minutes and look at it. Um, but six budget amendments is quite a bit that we.
But they're for specific items. It's not, it's not where you're looking at trends. It's not where you're looking at the budget as a whole and and noting trends where things are are not as expected. Um, trending up, down, or whatever. Um, that's different. When you look at a whole budget document and you're noting where you are in relation to where you expected to be, is very different than saying, hey, we have this project, we need to make a change in the budget for this specific project. That's not the whole document. So what I'm talking about, I appreciate what you're saying, but what I'm talking about is is a full look, um, of full checkup halfway through the year or whenever something significant is happening. Um, where we might make some changes such as, say, at the beginning of the year, we decide we're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars on project X. And halfway through the year, we find we are in the hole for something like seventy-five grand and we decide project X can wait until the next year because we need that money for something else. So a midterm budget review is going to give us the opportunity to change our trajectory and to make changes in ways that, um, you know, in projects or or plans that are not yet carried out. So that's, that's what I'm talking.
I do, I agree with you with that too. And, um, maybe, I don't know who's, someone can bring that for an agenda item at some point?
Well, you receive financial, monthly financials, and that's where you have an opportunity to see what's taking place within your budget. I'm not exactly sure what the, what the, the issue is. I mean, if there's something, you know, catastrophic or or really, you know, worrisome, of course, staff is going to bring that to council's attention, but we, we don't have what's happening. So it's, and you get your monthly financials from your accountant that shows you where your funds are. And if there was an issue that the accountant needed to present to council, you know, that would, that would be at that time as well. And council always has the ability to talk with Scott. Scott's made himself available numerous times, um, and made that offer. If anyone has questions to get into the, the, you know, dig deeper into the details of the budget. But that's, like I said, you're, that's not really the role of the council to micromanage the budget, to set the budget and then manage the city manager who then manages the rest of the staff.
And also to comment, making, our town is extremely small. We have a very small budget and a majority of the funds that we have are all grant stimulated, which have particular forms where they have to go to. So when we're doing these budget amendments, it's not like we're pulling from the general fund or anything. This is because we're getting money from a grant allocation. Not, not because we're in an emergency and we're losing money. Most of our grant, or most of our, uh, amendments are, we're getting money in because of grant allocations.
I can also see though, like in an election year particularly, um, coming in, not really, like coming in in January and not really knowing anything about the budget, that would be kind of a nice time to be able to do a refresh for the entire council. Um, and I'm just reflecting back when I came in in January and, you know, I mean, I, I feel like I have a de- I have a decent grasp on budgets just because of my time and education, working with grants and whatnot. But it would be nice to be able to look at it holistically as a new person coming in. So I mean, I can see where like even in January, that would be, that would be, um, a reasonable, a reasonable thing to take a look at.
Yeah, because I remember, I don't know, when we first got on, all of us, and four months later, we're talking about budget amendments again, and we had no idea what was going on.
Yeah. And we, we do get our quarterly financials, which are much appreciated. Thank you, Scott. Um, but we always package those in the back of the packet when, at the end of our agenda and we don't discuss them really. Um, you know, it's not, it's not really a discussion. I mean, we can discuss them.
Yeah, we can.
But it usually happens two, three plus hours into our meeting. And, um, you know, and it's not really a set aside item to, to go over. So, um,
It's an agenda item, so.
You can always move it on the agenda.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I like your idea. Because we're going to have, uh, an election and this is the election where there are three, possibly three new council people. We don't know, so it's a good thing to think about and look at and for January. Um, at this point, there is a motion and a second on the floor, uh, motion made by Adeline Jones, seconded by Elizabeth McKay. Is there any further discussion from council? The motion was for the passing of one, two, three, three, a resolution of the city council adopting a fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It passes four to one. Our next item is our town square property acquisition loan payoff. And this is very exciting. As most of you know, I have been very happy about getting actual town square. Ferndale has a main street, Arcata has a plaza, and now we have a town square, which I think is very exciting. And I've looked at that, that lot for many years and thought, wouldn't that be a great place for a town square? And now it's happening. Um, general information is that the city of Blue Lake has a loan balance of twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars for the original purchase of the town square property. The city took out the loan with Redwood Region Economic Development Corporation, REDEC also known as, to cover the cost of the property purchase and subsequently was able to secure grant funding to pay off the majority of the purchase price. As the original earned, earnest money deposit for the purchase of the property was paid to the seller at a date earlier than the final purchase amount was paid, the city was unable to apply the full purchase price to the grant. This has left an outstanding loan balance of twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars with an interest rate of five percent. Ouch. Okay. As the loan with REDEC has a fairly high interest rate, the city can save a substantial amount of money by paying off the loan. Oh, city staff is recommending that the council utilize de-federalized funds derived from community development block grant loan payments, and that's CDBG for those of us that heard that earlier, to pay off the outstanding balance of the town square loan. The city currently has a fund balance of seventy-eight thousand dollars and the payoff of the loan is an allowable use. As the loan REDEC has a fairly high interest rate, this would, um, be a good idea to do this. And we have the budget detail from our twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And the loan payment will reduce Fund Thirty-eight by the loan payment amount. So, um, I think this is a great idea.
Can we clarify the three different CBDG funds? There's thirty-eight. And, and I'm trying to find the page that explains that. Um, one of them is for program income and another one's a holding fund and I'm not certain of the third at the moment. Forty-two, thirty-eight, forty-two, and the other one is somewhere else. I don't know. They don't run in order. Thirty-eight, forty-two, forty-four. So we have the prog- CBD, the forty-four is the program income fund. Um, thirty-eight is non-program income. And forty-two is program income holding. So what is non-program income?
Go ahead, yeah.
So Fund Forty-two collects, um, loan payments, principal and interest, as well as earns interest on the CDBG program, um, corpus. So if those funds in any one given year do not exceed thirty-five thousand, they get de-federalized and shifted over to Fund Thirty-eight, which Fund Thirty-eight is, it's part of the general fund. And the city has primarily used this for small business loans that has discretion to do other things with it. And then Fund Forty-four is, is where the, the, the corpus of the CDBG program resides. So in a year where there are loan payments and interest earned in excess of thirty-five thousand, it would shift from Fund Forty-two to Forty-four instead of from Forty-two to Thirty-eight.
So Thirty-eight, even though the title here is non-program income, it is program income that comes in.
It's the de-federalized portion of it.
Right.
Once it becomes de-federalized, it's non-program.
But its origin was programmed. That's not confusing at all.
It's government. So the recommended action from this is to authorize the city manager to expend funds from Fund Thirty-eight to pay off the balance of the town square property purchase loan. And we're able to do this because of the area that the town square is in, is that, is that?
No, this is because this is the de-federalized portion of the CDBG fund. So essentially this becomes general fund.
Okay, so it didn't have to follow the, the strict rules of the normal funding.
So is there some period of time that it's in holding before it becomes general fund dollars?
It's annually. So July first through June thirtieth, the money feeds into Forty-two. And then once it's determined whether it's thirty-five thousand dollars or less, that, at that point, it gets shifted over.
And what rules apply to that money? Are the same, are the same rules applying to the money once it goes into the Forty-four as in the others?
Yeah, it becomes basically general fund revenue.
So all the money that was used for the library, that was all?
So that's Fund Forty-four. So Mandy received authorization from, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so that's a, um, that's program income funds that, um, the city has access to for qualified, um, projects that meet income thresholds and national objectives under CDBG. And so the library, so we have a substantial amount of money in that fund. Um, we'll have a fund balance of over two hundred and, I believe, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand or so in that fund. But those funds can only be used if they meet certain criteria and the national objectives of the CDBG program.
Do we have an item on our budget that shows that balance?
So are we off topic? I'm sorry, but.
Yeah.
We're talking about, we're talking about CDBG. This, that's the topic. And the reason I'm bringing this up is, it's been brought up a whole bunch of times. I know this. Um, and, um, there are still programs that make CDBG funds available to low-income homeowners to make repairs to their homes.
That's definitely off topic right now. That's not what we're talking about right here.
It is what we're talking about, Elizabeth.
Item right here, CDBG.
This is town square.
What this said.
We're talking.
Yes.
What I'm doing is I'm bringing up to the council some information that I learned today.
Um, I understand.
About this program.
But it's not, has anything to do with the agenda item that we're not.
The town square loan payoff.
How is it possible that taking money out of this account has nothing to do with this account? And the uses of the money in that account? I'm trying to say that this money, it's possible that this money could be made available to people in these programs.
It's not really the topic this evening, but we have talked about this and we have an issue in this town because we don't, a lot of places don't, people don't qualify for it.
Well.
But this is way off.
Yeah, yeah. So I would like to move that we authorize the city manager to expend funds from Fund Thirty-eight to pay off the balance of the town square property purchase loan.
A second.
Can I ask a clar-
There's going to be public input on this, so just to let the public know.
I just want to move it forward on what the topic is, what we're talking about here.
No problem.
Um, two questions are, that are tied together. So there's, there's a, there's a current loan balance, twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. First question is how much time, how many months, I guess, are remaining on that balance? And by paying it off now, what does that save the city?
Um, you know, honestly, I don't have the amortization schedule with me. Um, but we do have a loan due on, um, the first part of July and it carries with it the interest rate that we're paying. So it's a pretty substantial amount of interest in comparison to the principal. So the funds, the, you know, we're recommending that the city not continue to incur interest expenses um, and instead utilize these funds to pay it off completely.
I just didn't know how much time was left on the loan, you know?
Well, we would ask that it be recalculated. Um, if we, if the council decides not to pay off the loan, we would ask that it be recalculated for the amount remaining and not based upon what the original purchase was because it was over two hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, we wouldn't want to be under the same. we wouldn't want to be under the same amortization schedule or interest rate for a twenty-three thousand five hundred dollar loan versus, and you know, a two hundred thousand dollar.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second, but I am going to open this up to the public. If there's no further questions from council, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this issue? Becky, Kent. And Julie, and then Scott. Okay, Becky, you want Kent to go first? I see what you were saying.
So the money does go into the general fund, but the intent of this money was actually to help lower income people. And we've got a lot of, I don't care what you say. I, I think a lot of people actually, you'd be surprised how many people actually don't make that much money. They're retired people. They may own their house free and clear, but they don't have an income other than social security coming in into like. And you wonder why this money could be used for small business loans, and you wonder why we have no small here. So it, it just, it's very interesting that in my opinion, the, the actual intended use is put aside. And if you pay down loans, I don't know if your loan, you're about twenty-two dollars, five percent of that per interest.
Eleven hundred dollars.
Well, so that's interest a year at eleven hundred dollars, right? And so, so it's not that higher rate in this day and age. But to me, the, the, see, the money in that fund should be used for a certain purpose. And it's really, it's frustrating to me. Go around and look at houses around here that need work. And the people I know that are, cannot afford to fix their kitchen or bathroom, and yet we're not facilitating, even though it's been brought to our attention that John Ford's building, planning, building department does that, Rio Del could do it for us. So this is definitely a discussion when you have funds, alternative use of the money is definitely something that you have to discuss or has to be open for discussion. It's not out of context to discuss alternative uses when you're authorizing something for a specific project. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Did you want to go next, Becky? Okay, Becky, and then Julie, and then Scott.
Okay, so I you know, go ahead and pay it off. Five percent's really good. And I just want to say, our RDEC loans, we got three and paid them off, which that shows something. They were ten percent, so you guys are five. I think that's pretty gosh darn good. I mean, you know, a few extra payments, maybe you could use it to help people.
Julie?
Thank you. I would like to confer with having more purview on the alternatives, just like the prior agenda item with the roads were priorly selected without any consultation from public or council. And so I hate to predetermine like any usage of these funds if they're excess. Also, on our last item, I did raise my hand, but I wish Kent had spoke after me because he could correct me on this. I do believe that when you open public comment prior to a motion, once a motion is made, you then again have to open up public comment prior to voting.
That's true. We haven't taken the vote yet.
Yes, correct ma'am, but you did on the last one without public comment. That's my concern. So that, that whole vote's in void. It's already done. Thank you.
Could you please explain that, Adeline? Because we had this concern before. Or I can't.
Well, I, I like to be more consistent about it, but somebody jumps in and makes a motion in a second, so then we have to have the public comment. Somewhere before the vote. That's, that's the important thing. It's got to be before the vote. That's Robert's Rules of Order.
Thank you, Julie. This has been brought up before, but it doesn't matter if it's before the action is taken, as long as it's taken before the vote.
Yeah, it doesn't matter about the motions.
Before the vote, the vote. It doesn't matter if the first and second came in.
Oh. I think Scott was next and then, okay, go ahead, Jean. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, I was trying to understand the process for the revenues being taken out of Fund Forty-four. And I, I understand that Mandy had one time that people on West End Road are somehow involved the fund for the city of Blue Lake. And that it expands the, the low income structure somehow for the funding. That was stated in a meeting. I have to go find it that. But I know I heard it. So I could qualify for a fund, and I wouldn't mind qualifying for this fund, but we have decided that I don't necessarily need this. And I'm not quite sure how that even happened. And yes. I'm retired. Yes, I am on social security. Yes. I could use the money. And taking money, and I can think of some other people, and I don't think it's an embarrassment after working years and years in this city to help improve this city in many ways, that I should apologize in any way, shape or form if I would happen to want to ask for that. But apparently this is a fund that is going to be used for something else. Not for what it was meant to be. Not what it was intended for, but for something else. I don't get it. I don't get the process. I don't get the thinking. I don't get the high-handed that we don't have people like this in Blue Lake. Yes, we do. What's the problem? What's the problem with helping people in this town? Not somebody down that wants to go to the park, somebody that wants to come here and ride a bike. Helping people in this town. What's the problem? Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Scott, I think you were next, and I, I thought I saw Julie's hand, but.
No, she has thumbs up for the explanation.
Oh, oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Scott Fraser, Blue Lake. I'd like to back up and speak to the history of this project about the town square because the mismanagement of this has been just amazing. At the planning stage, there were numerous public meetings. Susan Renalas was working on a special assignment for the city. And at the last public meeting, questions were asked about what's going to go in the square. And there was surveys taken, what people wanted. And we have a lot of senior citizens in this community, and the major thing that they want, it was a quiet place to sit down. Instead of that, it looks like all the vegetation's been ripped out, and we're going to have impervious surfaces there. So that's an interesting design feature. But back to the history of this, there was a member of this community who offered to help finance that purchase and buy the entire property. So you wouldn't be up against some of the ugliness that's immediately adjacent in the old commercial building that needs to be remodeled or reused. And the purchase was paid over the appraised price before this appraisal that was required was done. Again, that's mismanagement. Part of the reason it was a twenty-three thousand dollar balance is because too much money was paid for that property. But again, I'd like you to look at the design and tell us how much we're going to end up with that are vegetated surfaces and space for quiet. What is the reason to have all the compaction and impervious surfaces in the middle of our town square? It really is a ridiculous project the way it's turned out.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, now, back to council and.
What we're calling up? According to Christine Martinique and John Ford at the Humboldt County Planning Department, this use of this, of these funds is not appropriate. And may be frowned upon by by the development, by the housing and urban development department.
But I think what we've heard is that the money moves over to the general fund.
Right, but again, it's the intention of that money. And I think Jean spoke very well to the intention of that money. The city doesn't need that money like some folks in our town need that money.
But also there's an application fee for that. And you have to qualify for it.
You have, it's income qualified, the county of Humboldt, the planning department with, through an MOU. They're doing it right now with Rio Del. They're administering all their earthquake relief funds, and that's all so through the same program. And they could do that for us.
Yeah.
For anybody in this town who is income qualified for a low-interest loan.
Yes, income qualified that comes in and applies for this position.
And if we make, and if we make the program available to folks, we will have applicants. No, we haven't made it available to anybody for many, many years. So that's the problem. We're using up all the money for city projects, and we're not making the funds available to the residents who might need it.
Available in your program income fund.
That's what.
They just have to be an allowable project. This is a separate fund.
I'm trying.
So these are completely separate dollars.
It's been available. Nobody's applying for it. And if they do apply for it, like she mentioned earlier, a lot of it, a lot of our area, we don't qualify for it. And if they do qualify for it, they need to get out there and apply for this.
Well, we need to make it public that we have money that's available for that. We need to develop an MOU with the county first so that they can administer the program for us.
We actually do have an agreement with the county, and the county actually administered the library project for us, just like they did for Fortuna and Rio Del and, and other entities. The problem was that the, at the time, that the county did not want to take on the loan program for home repairs. And that was a pro, a totally separate type of project that is a much more intensive program to administer. There's a lot of qualifying factors. It's a loan program. There's liens against titles. There's inspections. There's all kinds of work that goes into that that's much more intensive than what the county is doing for other municipalities, which is administering basically contracts. So the same work that they are doing for the other entities, they did the exact same work for the city for the library project. Paula Mushrush put together our grant application. She got it through CDBG. And Paula's now retired. Andrew Whitney was doing it. He's now moved on, and I don't know who's doing it right now at the county. But it's separate from doing home loan programs. The city has the money sitting there. We can't use it except for a program and a project that the state of California authorizes. So the money is not going anywhere. This is a separate source of revenue.
Well, I was told yesterday by by Christine and this morning by John Ford, that, that the county of Humboldt would be happy to administer this program for.
Great, I'll reach out to John Ford tomorrow and ask him about that because that hasn't been the case in the past. Both of their administrators no longer are doing these programs. And they had absolutely offered to run CDBG programs for us except for home loan projects.
Yeah, because I looked into it. It is extremely complicated, as you mentioned.
There's, oh, you can also go over the counter to the county as well.
Lean on your house that you have to maintain until the project is done and pay off the loan and however long the loan is, it is.
It's like a real loan.
But it's even weirder than just a regular loan. It's not a normal loan. And I do agree with you, Jean and Mr. Swawsky, that we have a lot of people here that are low-income, but most of them who are are not homeowners. We have a lot of renters here that are low-income. And they can't qualify for these loans.
They can't. Good point. All right, there's been a motion on the floor by Elizabeth McKay, second by Christopher Edgar. Is there any further discussion on this item, council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Passes, oh. It passes four to one. Bless you. Okay, we are on item ten, Humboldt County Sheriff. Correspondence, discussion, and direction. The city received additional correspondence. Okay. Excuse me, could we have a quiet, please? Thank you. The city council, the city of Blue Lake received additional correspondence from Sheriff Hansel regarding his proposal. His proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four contract amendment. The city has been working with the sheriff's administrative staff to negotiate and finalize a new contract for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. And council has authorized the city manager to execute the new contract upon final legal review. The city does not have an executed contract amendment for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And the final negotiated cost increase for the new contract was not finalized until April of twenty-four. It is a recommendation of city manager that the city continue to finalize the new contract and that the increase be applied to the upcoming fiscal year. The city has budgeted for the increase in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. It is the position of the city manager that the sheriff does not have the authority under the existing Humboldt County Board of Supervisors authorizing action to implement a cost increase for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. As a proposed increase is outside of the contracting limit set by the original action. And the fiscal impact is a cost increase to the city's fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four contract with the sheriff, which would reduce the city's general fund by the increased amount. So this is a discussion and possible direction and action item. Some of us were at the Board of Supervisors meeting today and it did not go in our favor, I would say. I spoke and Manny Mager spoke. The contract for the new year is, is finalized. That is in place, as I understand.
It's not. It's not in place yet. It will be brought for, you guys have authorized the twenty-four, twenty-five contract, so we're just waiting for legal review. And then once we sign, the sheriff will take it to the Board of Supervisors, who are actually the ones who authorize him to move forward.
And concerning the past due, we have one more quarterly payment to make on that. And then we will be paid up.
Plus a little extra.
Well, right. And that, and that was what was interesting to me when I was thinking about this this afternoon, that after the meeting was so Sheriff Hansel was saying that in the contract, we had a three-year contract. And he said that the, and they said that in the verbiage of the contract, it said that in any time during that contract, they can change it and ask for more money. And what I couldn't figure out about that was, I mean, that just seems so arbitrary to me that there was, there, that they can just do this arbitrarily. They don't need to make any, have any discussion about it. They don't have to have any reasoning for it.
There is some level of, of ability to negotiate within the existing contract. What also was set forth by the Board of Supervisors was the parameters with, in which they could propose an amendment. And so the, the Board of Supervisors put a hard break on the amount that they could negotiate up to, and that was the issue that the sheriff brought to the Board of Supervisors today, asking for retroactive approval because he did not have the authority to amend our contract outside of the previous budgeted amount that the Board of Supervisors had basically allocated or granted him authority to negotiate within. Unfortunately, that the Board of Supervisors did move forward with the recommendation or the authorization for him to negotiate a twenty-three, twenty-four increase, which the city, you know, we knew that an increase would be coming. Our hope was that it would not be the the increase that's being proposed for twenty-four, twenty-five, because those costs are associated with costs that are projected for twenty-four, twenty-five, which include twenty-four, twenty-five budget numbers for personnel that are not reflective of twenty-three, twenty-four costs. But unfortunately, there was a slightly disunified, I would say, position on that issue that reflected, I would say, poorly on the city of Blue Lake. So I did receive correspondence from Regina Fuller today stating that the sheriff would entertain our our reasonable increase. He's still proposing it to be the full application of the twenty-four, twenty-five cost increase, which is about forty-five thousand dollars. I'm hoping that we can still try and find a way to negotiate that down because I don't feel that it's reasonable or based upon twenty-three, twenty-four actual costs, which is what it's supposed to be reflective of. So we'll be looking at those numbers this week and communicating that back to the sheriff, and we'll see where we end up. And then we'll bring that back to the council as part of our budget amendment.
So the twenty-four, twenty-five amount is a hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Yes.
And that, and what now he's proposing is that we add forty-five thousand dollars to that.
No, so what he's proposing, our current contract right now is about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
And so he's asking to apply the new negotiated contract rate of a hundred and ninety, the difference of that back retroactively to twenty-three, twenty-four. So essentially it's about a forty-five thousand dollar increase to our current fiscal year contract.
So we all, all of us council members got that same letter, I believe. It was copied to um everyone in the council. And um, I'd like to just go ahead and read it for the sake of clarity. It says, Dear City Manager Mager and City Council, City of Blue Lake Council Members. On behalf of the sheriff and after consulting with county council, the sheriff's office is notifying you that the annual cost of providing law enforcement services to the city of Blue Lake for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is one hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. Based on our negotiations, we mutually agreed to the methodology for determining the actual costs. We do not have a justifiable reason to reduce the amount below the one hundred and ninety-six eighty-five. This amount reflects the true costs of services to the city. If the city wishes to propose a counter offer to settle the amount due, please advise us as soon as possible. As with the previous year, an amendment to the contract is not required for the recalculated rate. Please see attached letter from county council to the sheriff confirming what was authorized by the Board of Supervisors today. Please send the remaining amount due by July one, twenty-twenty-four. In accordance with the agreement, a copy of the invoice previously attached sent is attached for your convenience. Per the letter sent by the sheriff to the city of Blue Lake on June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, should the balance due not be paid, then the sheriff's office will suspend provision of the general law enforcement services to the city of Blue Lake as of August one, twenty-twenty-four. Additionally, given the challenges with settling this matter, we have been advised to enter into annual agreements moving forward instead of a three-year contract. Therefore, please see a revised agreement for a one-year term. All other language in the agreement remains the same. I have attached a redlined version and a clean version. We are happy to meet if you have any questions about the revised agreement. Our office will not be taking this new agreement to the Board of Supervisors for approval until number one, the outstanding balance for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is paid. And two, the new agreement has been executed by the city of Blue Lake and returned to the sheriff. Thank you, Regina Fuller. And then she um included the letter from the county council to Sheriff Hansel, dear sher- dear sheriff. I am writing to follow up on today's Board of Supervisors meeting where the county's contract with the city of Blue Lake for provision of law enforcement services was discussed. The board took action on the staff recommendation, actions to number one, amend the recommendation from the May twenty-four, twenty-two meeting agenda to clarify that the current agreement for law enforcement services does not have a total contractual amount cap. And number two, clarify that the sheriff's Deputy Director of Financial and Support Services has the authority to notice the city of Blue Lake of the recom- recomputed annual amount reflecting the cost of providing law enforcement services to the city. And number three, charges, ratified charges in the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars to the city of Blue Lake for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Certain board members encourage you to discuss the outstanding balance due with the city of Blue Lake in an attempt to compromise. Given the challenges presented with arriving at the current, at the cost of services for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, it may be advisable to adopt a yearly contract that states the amount due for services instead of a three-year contract that calls for recomputation of that cost on an annual basis with discussions regarding the next year's contract amount being in January. Sincerely, Natalie Duke, Acting Assistant County Counsel. So my interpretation is that um we need to pay the money or we are at risk of losing, losing services. And um, and I've reviewed that, our, our signed contract that we signed back in twenty-two numerous times. And there is, it's not arbitrary. Every year, it states that the, that the sheriff will recompute the cost of services and that.
There's no argument with that. There was no argument with the re-computation language.
I did, I did. And now it's been explained to me. It did seem arbitrary to me when.
The number was arbitrary. The number of three fifteen was absolutely arbitrary. And that's what this, it was arbitrary. No, it wasn't an error. It was a number that was given to us. The sheriff came and gave us a pay or quit letter. He handed straight to Mayor Jones in front of everybody. So to say it's an error, uh, it's a pretty calculated error. So I think um there's a lot of problems associated with that. And we now have a new cost methodology that thankfully, the city didn't accept the three fifteen and absolutely went to the table and negotiated for a new amount.
Right, yeah, right, absolutely.
It is reflective of actual costs.
Out and you're agreeing that the methodology is good and the amount is good and.
I'm not agreeing that the twenty-three, twenty-four application is good. I absolutely do not agree with that. The numbers that were projected are for twenty-four, twenty-five. That includes all of their salary increases and all their inflation increases for twenty-four, twenty-five. Twenty-four, twenty-five cost should not be retroactively applied to twenty-three, twenty-four. So therefore, I do not believe that the city is paying what our fair share of cost would be.
So my understanding is that they used the twenty-three, twenty-four numbers when they were working with you and, and changing some of those costs.
Twenty-four, twenty-five numbers, trying to retroactively apply them to twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, when we had our ad hoc meeting in January with Elizabeth McKay, Regina, Regina Fuller was there, Mandy Mager and uh, the uh, deputy. Quinn, yeah.
Brian.
Quinn, yeah. And we went line by line and adjustments were made. Um, you know, I mean, one of the things we talked about was the fact that in the, in the phone calls, a lot of our phone calls were coming from, our calls for police services were coming from outside of the city of Blue Lake. That was one of the.
Over sixty percent.
But we've discussed that over and.
I know we have, I know.
That's not how they bill.
Yes, they absolutely did.
Should consider that.
And line items that billed us for that. We were all there and sat and listened to them while they told us that.
No, they said exactly the opposite.
At, at this point, it doesn't even matter.
Let's move forward to this issue. Um.
I think there's larger issues associated with this whole process that'll probably be addressed later. But I think at this point, um, city staff will be looking at the costs and will be um hopefully seeing if there's a way to bring that number down to something that doesn't impact the general fund.
And if there isn't, what are we gonna do?
I mean, you can, the council is, can direct us to, to do, pay what needs to be paid. I mean, I don't know.
You can also have a payment schedule or something like that.
We have the money. We have a ninety-five thousand dollar surplus.
We do not have a ninety-five thousand dollar surplus. That was an erroneous comment. That was a projection. And you represented that.
Ninety-six and your, and your budget that you showed us last time showed ninety-five thousand and change.
That's our, a projection.
A surplus, whether we do or not. Why should we pay more than we have to, especially for services that weren't rendered?
Absolutely.
Oh, Lord. I, I think, I think we're just so off the mark here.
I think we all know your position, Councilmember Scipani. We heard it loud and clear today when you represented the sheriff over the city.
So there's a notification in there that we can um let them know that we want to go back and renegotiate.
So basically, what staff is prepared to do is to look at the cost proposal for twenty-four, twenty-five. And if we see any um issues with those projections that are based upon twenty-four, twenty-five projections that are not retro um co- associated costs, then the city will bring that up as an issue.
For twenty-three, twenty-four or for twenty-four, twenty?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
So we're not settled entirely then.
Nope. It's what it says in the letter that we can propose a, a negotiated price. And we will continue to do that.
And are we committed to getting that settled before the end of July so that we don't risk losing services? That's the, that's the issue, I think, that they've said if you don't, if you don't come current, by, by the end of July, we'll stop providing service.
Staff is committed to making sure there's a contract in place for the city and that law enforcement provisions are provided.
Thank you.
But we're not committed to being strong-armed through the process.
So this is gonna be a one-year contract then? Is that what they're now?
Yeah, and I think that's appropriate at this point in dealing with the sheriff and these negotiation processes. I think that's um, probably a better place for the city to be than to be tied to a three-year contract.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. That was a ridiculous situation.
Um, so the direction then is for staff to look at the cost proposal. And um, our next meeting is in July, at the end of July. There's not, there's no action recommended. So just discussion and direction possibly. Our next meeting is July twenty-third. Okay, is there any other discussion before I open it up to public? Okay. I'm opening this to public. Kent and then Julie.
Sometimes I think um people have a hard time understanding English. So I'm gonna translate this into, it's what I call Spanglish or Spanish. No dinero, no policia. Uh, very simple thing. Um, the problem you've had in this whole process is where is your attorney on this? Well, your attorney had a conflict of interest, but you didn't get another attorney. This is a legal contract. You're taking, you're taking legal opinions from, from your city manager. And you really should, if you, if these are any consequences, you're gonna end up paying the eighty thousand dollars or, or we won't have any police protection. Uh, possibly you'll get a payment schedule, but I don't think you'll be able to justify that with the budget you have. Um, and so I think the message was sent quite strongly today. People don't understand, the sheriff's elected. He, he doesn't have to do anything to supervise. They can't tell him to do anything. All they can do is pull his money away from him. And of course, they're not about to do that. So that is the process here. You're dealing with elected. I highly recommend anytime you have contractual law that you get a hold of a competent attorney since your current one had a conflict of interest. And you run this by attorney. That's what they're for. I think we only have eight thousand dollars worth of budget money for an attorney. You're gonna have to go to outside counsel when there's a conflict. Uh, I cannot believe that uh, I don't go and do things without going to an attorney. Why should you, folks? Go ahead and think you know more than a county council. Uh, I know this, the quality of a county council the county has, they reviewed this. They made their comments. I highly recommend, for those of you who are not in the room or did not hear this, you go ahead and listen to the communication that was gone in the meeting. And I think that will give you a better idea as far as what's about to happen. This does need to be reflected in your budget. So I guess you're due for a budget amendment probably uh, next meeting. It sounds like you'll have a first, first one for next year. They come up to you and speak.
Julie.
Um, I do have a suggestion for the fact that Kent brought up the timer earlier. As I'm viewing Zoom through the screen, I can see the table between the two cords. That might be a good place to slide that timer up into so that, that people on the pedestal and people on Zoom can actually see their time. Um, I, I also was um participating online, watching the supervisors' meeting earlier today. Um, I do not like seeing the looks that came from our manager and mayor in the background. That was slightly embarrassing. Um, we deal with it in our chambers for many years and we've been respectful, not calling out for it, but honestly, to see that in the chambers of the supervisors, um, being somebody that's very avid, watching all of them. Um, it really doesn't reflect good upon us. And a lot of this situation unfortunately does not reflect good upon us. Um, I understand communications seems to be our biggest issue. Well, that's not our fault. That falls on your hands and you know who. And if we wanna keep playing strong arm, um, I have some incidences that are gonna be coming up to you guys again here shortly that is strong-arming and it's been going on behind a lot of people's backs. So it doesn't make me shy to assume that that's some other situation happening here. Hence, I pay attention. So thank you for bringing attendance at the supervisors' day. But let's be positive and good reflection and back on our town. That does not look like a mockery. Thank you.
Uh, Becky and then Erin.
Of course, I said it earlier, I also.
Better stand closer to the mic.
I also watched that supervisors' meeting and it was a little embarrassing and see some of the expressions I saw and things that were done. But I do wanna say one thing. Just pay your bill. That's it. Easy.
Erin.
Hi, I'm Erin McClure. And I was also at the supervisors' meeting and I was pretty embarrassed by the city of Blue Lake there. Um, and since Mandy's gonna talk about star, uh, strong-arming, I will not be strong-armed by the city of Blue Lake either. So um, be careful about what you say, cuz you're doing it too. Elise, I was more than proud of you, listening to you speak at that meeting. Thank you for standing up for the city, the people in the town, and also for standing up for our sheriff's department. I was super proud. Thank you so much.
Is there any other public comment, Jean?
I, I was watching some of the Board of Supervisors and, and it occurred to me that the people that are making the um changes for the um, for our department to, to come in here and, and, and the cost evaluation. Um, they're very well educated. And I'm sure there's a degree involved in that, you know, financial planning, um, understanding um, the needs of a community. Uh, I think that, that Ms. Fuller, I think is, is very responsible. And, and uh, I would assume that uh the county has hired her because she knows what she's doing. The sheriff was elected. He's been a, a hard worker. Uh, he's not trying to cheat anybody. He's trying to keep his department going in hard times. And I worked personally as an accounts receivable clerk for ten years. Then I worked as a full-charge bookkeeper for, oh, twenty-five years. And I gotta tell you, the first thing that I would say is, oh, I'm sorry that you guys are having these difficulties and you don't understand that the, the finances and you don't understand, um, uh, and you can't afford this and you want your park, but when, when are you gonna pay the bill? When can I expect the check? And there is no negotiation when you come to that point, when you have somebody that is presenting you a bill. And the alternative is no service. So I am sure they're looking at all of this and going, okay, when are we gonna get our money? And there is no uh, easy way to do that. There's, it, it's, it's part of life. You have a service, pay the bill. It's, it's how life works. Well, we're not, we're not in a fantasy land where we can pull off uh, the flowers out of the flower pot, sell them and, and then pay the bill. Uh, we have taxes. People that, uh, are charged taxes. People expect protection from their city government. We're not here to have a party, are we? Go down and have a beer? We need to have protection in this city more than we would ever need a park. Or, or have a little fun down on the river bar. That's what we're here for. Thank you.
Yay, we're back to council, seeing no other like um hands up. And um, so this was not an action item. It sounds like we have a direction for staff to go. If you need our ad hoc committee, I assume we're still available for that. That's necessary. Um, part of the problem was Regina Fuller, who is really capable, was sick last year during some of the um, changes that occurred. So I think that was a, a gap that.
Well, I'd like to just remind you that today's action by the Board of Supervisors was the first time that the sheriff actually had authorization to implement the change. So there was an authorization prior. And if we had gone with recommendations from some of the community members and some of the council members originally to pay the original of demand, it was three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So because we didn't go with that recommendation, um, our new contract will be a hundred and ninety. So there's a big difference um, that took a long time to get to that point. And there were definitely miscues on the part of the sheriff's calculations. And their staff admitted that wholly today. But the three fifteen was never a number that was supposed to be presented to the city. And thankfully, we didn't go along with public com- some public comment and recommendations and some council member recommendations. Because at the end, we're paying much less than three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for services.
It was a very productive meeting. Okay, um, so we'll move on then to council correspond. So we'll move on then to council correspondence. And we had a letter from Mr. Sawatsky that I will read. And if there's any other correspondence, let me know. Here it is. I've got it. I got it. I got it. Uh, good morning, oh, good afternoon, Mandy. R A O. And there we go with another acronym. Is not following the required procedures for detours on Greenwood. Oh, that's the company.
Yeah.
They have one sign showing a left hand turn.
What is it?
Rusty Allen Olson Construction.
Well, you know why. Stick for it. Very nice. Rusty Allen Owen is not following the required procedure for detours on Greenwood. They have one sign showing a left hand turn. They are required to have sufficient signage that a first time driver to our city can safely get to the roadway past the detour. This would require a left turn past the fire station, a left turn past the construction and a right turn back on Greenwood. All other cross streets between Wall Street question mark and Greenwood are also required to have substantial blockades and signage. As stated before, there is zero reason for a detour. It should be a one way flagged project. Any director of public works that does not understand these simple project management principles should be terminated. You are endangering the public health, safety and welfare. See you Tuesday twice, Kent Sawatsky. And then later, Annalee, please have this read into the record this evening as council correspondents. Please, please concern receipt of the request. Is there any other correspondence?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. All right, uh. We are on item twelve consent agenda. Uh, is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I would like to pull warrants and dispersments.
Um, okay. Anyone else want anything else pulled? Anyone from the public would like anything pulled from the consent calendar?
Comment.
What's that?
Make comment.
Make a comment. Okay, right. Um, so then we are going to pass items A, B and C, the minutes of March twenty sixth, April nineteenth.
There are a couple.
Uh oh.
There's a small, there's a small correction in um
Which one would you like to pull?
Um, the first one.
Okay.
March.
Well, why don't we pass B, B and C? And then we can talk about A and D. If that's uh, okay with the council.
If they're not substantial changes, if it's like a typo or something.
Yeah.
We can fix those as long as it's not material without having to pull it from consent.
I'm looking, I'm looking at page six of April or March, rather, I'm sorry. Um, on page six, where it says council member Scifani attended a redact meeting. Um, it was an RCEA meeting. I don't, I haven't ever been to a redact meeting.
I go to redact.
RCE. That's all.
There again, those acronyms are getting us into trouble. Okay, um. So then we need a motion to pass consent agenda items A, B and C with that correction to the March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four minutes.
I think a motion is read.
Second. Motion made by Christopher Edgar, seconded by Elizabeth McKay to pass consent agenda items A, B and C with the correction in March twenty sixth that it should see, it should say RCEA and not redact. Any further discussion from council? Any questions or comments or anything from public? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, it passes. Warrants and dispersments. What I'm thinking is that perhaps you, Christopher Edgar, could um recuse yourself from passing the warrant. Just so that we do not have the appearance of any impropriety.
Yeah.
We know there isn't.
Really.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, the other thing you could do is pass the wa- the dispersments, the warrants and dispersments and take out your salary. You know, I've seen that done too, but in the past, but this is this
Like, I I wasn't the one that called it, so if my salary is going to be there in there, in there no matter what, so.
Yeah.
And she has any questions about that?
Well, as a matter of fact, I kind of do. Um, I'll be back. Call her at me.
Okay.
So um, yeah. Um, I was just noticing that Christopher did get a paycheck in May. He started working on the twentieth. He got a paycheck dated the thirty first. I understand that that page, that pay period um ended on the twenty sixth. And I noticed that Christopher's pay was just slightly lower than somebody that worked for two weeks instead of one week. And um, I just really, I mean, I know that you can't tell me a a wage that he's being paid. I don't know if you can tell me if there's some call pay on there that makes that look the way it looks.
I mean, that I I'm seeing it as May twenty eighth. Are we looking at the same page?
No. That that's a pre-employment payment.
Oh.
On the next page, um, on the thirty first, that was a paycheck for s- for
Yeah, what should
What would have been five days of work. And you can see um two other employees that work in the same department. Um, one made nine hundred dollars um for the, for a two week period. And the other made eleven hundred dollars for that same two weeks period. So um I don't know if you can tell us if that's straight wages or if there's other, other
Well, I can tell you that there's an obvious pay differential based upon uh Chris's his position. I mean, he's being, he's hired at the second highest position in public works. So obviously, there's a pay differential. And then other employees also have various deductions and obligations that come out of their pay that I don't feel is appropriate for me to discuss here. Um, their wages are all public information and we can provide that to you. Um, but if I don't know how else to answer that. Um, if you're, I I feel like trying to make that comparison, I think, you know, you've brought this up already before about employees' wages and and Chris's pay. And I think we've articulated that, that he's at a much higher level than our maintenance workers under
Well, I don't, I don't recall articulating that, but I I guess I'm a little confused too because I thought that the job posting that was up um was for public works operator. And that's the third, the third um employee on this, on this um wage scale with the public works superintendent, then the public works supervising operator and the public works maintenance operator, maintenance. So my understanding was that the job posting that he fulfilled was for a public works operator, which would not be the supervisor.
It is the supervisor position. There had to be clarification because we had old job descriptions that didn't reflect accurately their job duties. And so we've made that that clarification. We didn't change the scope of the duties, but we did change the title to be more reflective of the actual responsibilities associated with that position.
I see. Well, that makes the transgression even more egregious than I thought it was.
And can you clarify that statement?
I'm happily. I think that the two gentlemen that work for the city, that have worked for the city for more than twenty years combined, deserved first shot at that job. And I think that hiring a sitting council member for the job to supervise those folks was a terrible violation of ethics.
Councilmember Scifani, I would say that those comments are also a violation of ethics coming from your position. My position is to hire and manage staff, not yours. And we did go through a robust process of evaluation and interviewing to determine the best suited person for the position based upon qualifications. And so I think that's an out of line statement and I think it's out of place at this forum.
It doesn't really have anything to do with
Very much in title to your opinion.
It doesn't have anything to do with warrants and dispersments, I'll tell you that.
What it shows is that he was hired for a position we didn't even know was being advertised. That's
It absolutely
Just learned tonight.
It's the same job description, it's just a title change.
The supervisor was not being advertised. The operator was being advertised.
The job duties described in the job description include supervision. And so we made that clarifying factor in the job title to include the supervisory role that has always been included in the operator duties.
But it's a completely different pay scale.
It's reflective of the actual job duties and requirements and licensure and responsibilities associated with the position. And I can tell you that Mr. Edgar is fully qualified for the position that he was hired for. And there were multiple people on the panel that made that evaluation.
And this did go to our attorney as well. I spoke, I actually spoke with our attorney about this because I was concerned about it. And I suggested that he recuse himself when the warrants and dispersments happened. And the attorney said, well, I'll get back to you on that. But it does seem like a good idea. So that's why I decided to proceed this way. And he is up for reelection and and, you know, my feeling is he probably won't run again, but um, you know, that's up, completely up to him. Um, all right, if there are any other discussion about this item, do we want to have a vote on?
Can I ask real quickly, what's Freedom Voice?
Uh, Freedom Voice is the service that we use for after hour call emergencies.
Oh, got it.
So when you call in, it'll transcribe and then it'll send out the um call alerts to um Glenn, um Hal and myself.
Got it. It's a small amount, but it was just
Yeah. Okay, so we need a motion to pay the warrants and dispersments. So move in a second. Um, there's been a motion by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Angela Scholl. Is there public comment on this item? Um, Kent?
Well, city manager maker, you asked her for an answer. You got one.
Absolutely.
And so how can you say somebody, you ask them for an honest answer and they give you an honest answer and you feel it's inappropriate? So anyway, I I I do find a problem with that. Um, I I do have a question for you. Uh, earlier in the meeting, you passed a budget and you passed a budget with pay stages and increases possibly for your city council member. And yet at that time, he didn't recuse himself. I mean, that was one of the ones he really should have recused himself on definitively. Because if he hadn't passed that in that stage, he would have been thinking about a money possibly that he would be receiving or not. So I'm going to take my phone out of here. I think I've had my say. Thank you very much.
Yeah, he should have been recused for the entire budget process.
He absolutely was allowed to vote. Uh, we had a legal opinion on that today and the attorney said that there was no um conflict.
He can vote for his own, he can vote on his own pay raises?
There was, it's not pay raises. He's voting on the budget. He doesn't have any influence over the actual wages associated with himself. That's comes from a supervisory position that's not associated with his roles and responsibilities.
Ah, the joys of a small town. Okay, um, we have motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Angela Scholl to pay the warrants and dispersments. Is there any further discussion from council? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? It passes. Four, two, I think one abstentions.
Or, yeah, one abstention.
One abstention. Okay, so someone can go get
I'll text him real quickly.
How far is he? All right, we are at reports of council and staff and he's going to be the first one there.
He could start over here.
Okay.
I didn't do anything.
Yeah. Don't
I was out of, I was out of the country.
Or no, it wasn't mixed.
So thank you for those of you who stood in for me for my meetings.
Okay, um, I guess we're going backwards here.
We're going backwards.
Okay, go for it.
Uh. It's mind bending. It's like trying to write with my left hand. Uh, so the only meeting between, that I had between the special meeting and this one was redact, which was last night. Um, I did make mention at the last meeting that redact is making a concerted effort to hold um meetings on a quarterly basis or thereabouts at um different municipalities and outside of the um Eureka uh city council room, which was really nice. We were in Rio Del last night. Um, Rio Del is going through some very significant challenges. Um, uh, but that's a whole other issue. Um, so the city manager did a great job of outlining some of those, some of those challenges and ways that redact can support them with those. Um, and beyond that, we um we uh agreed and voted to, voted and agreed, sorry, to form a subcommittee so that redact could um look at increased community engagement, um particularly around diversity, equity and inclusion. And there were some graphs relating to the loans that redact has out and the minimally are, um, those loans are minimally uh dispersed to folks in the BIPOC community and more specifically women in the BIPOC community. So uh, there's um, there's a subcommittee that who was looking how, who was looking into uh increasing the uh diversity, equity and inclusion components. Um, redact also sent, has agreed to send a letter in opposition to AB twenty seven ninety seven, the telephone uh corporation carrier of last resort tariff. I think we received an email from AT&amp;T today explaining why it was a great idea that they do that. It's not, in my opinion. Um, but so redact is going to, in essence, um mimic the letter that was approved by the um county board of supervisors and send that in. Um, I think that was really it. Yeah.
Does council member Edgar have conflict of interest or should I have him at these?
Please invite him in. Thank you.
I texted him, but I guess he didn't get it yet.
It's not true.
No. Yeah, no. Oh, that's that. So we're doing our council's reports and since you were still out there. Well, okay, we were going backwards. So um, so uh, I'm I'm next. Um, arts and heritage meeting was canceled. I attended the Blue Lake graduation on uh the twelfth. I handed out certificates to the nine eighth grade graduates, two girls and seven boys. What is it about boys in Blue Lake? Last year it was fourteen graduates, two girls and twelve boys. Um, next year is supposed to be about twenty graduates, so there's more seventh graders coming up. We also gave them skate passes um from the city of Blue Lake for their um graduation. And then the Humboldt Waste Management Authority meeting was the next night, which was the Arcata High and McKinleyville graduation. And Christopher is my alternate. I wasn't able to make it because my grandson graduated from Arcata High. He was not able to make it because he had a niece graduating.
And plus like five other kids.
Yeah. So we did not have a representative at Humboldt Waste Management Authority that evening.
What'd they get for holding it out at graduation?
Well, exactly. Um, and then moving along from that, I did re- I did attend Humboldt County Association of Governments meeting, which was mostly taken up with the audit. Um, and Keith Borges, who does our audit as well here in the city of Blue Lake. Um, and we approved um uh funding agreement between the Humboldt Transit Authority and the city of Arcata and the county of Humboldt and HCOG regarding dial-a-ride services. Um, we also uh had the Transportation Development Act, Article Two Bicycle and Pedestrian Two Percent Allocation Request, which we approved. And then during the Caltrans report, I asked about the tunnel going through La- Last Chance Grade. And the Caltrans representative was not um ready to give a report on that, but we should be getting a report on that next uh at next meeting. Um, she did talk about the Indianola Interchange Building Load Transfer Platform and the forty mile per hour speed limit, which um is, people are not adhering to. And then um I reported that the Annie and Mary, um, one of the Annie and Mary vendors that's going to be at our um Annie and Mary Day this year on July fourteenth is the Citizens for Responsible Transportation. And they're having an information table and offering something called a bicycle valet service, not valet, valet, which means that people can bring their bicycles to Annie and Mary Day and they will keep them for people so they don't have to worry about them while they enjoy the day. And of course, we talked about the two hundred feet of temporary track. Um, that the uh speeder train is going to be coming on That the speeder train is going to be coming on in at Annie and Mary Day, which is very exciting. Which will be happening, I guess, before our next meeting. So that's good to report on that. Okay, that's all I have. Go ahead.
I don't think I have anything that I haven't already reported on.
Yeah, because we have that special meeting
Yeah.
Weeks ago. So all our, most of our meetings were at that. All right, so we'll move on to council or city manager report.
I don't have anything additional to report.
And the financial report. Who just did that? Yeah, I know. Like why is, okay, that shouldn't have been on there. Okay, future agenda items. Our next meeting, as I mentioned, is July twenty third. And we had a request for the general plan to be presented to the council and maybe some discussion on that. So Gary Reese could might maybe be here for that. Any other ideas for next meeting? We'll have our agenda setting meeting probably. Seems like Wednesday is working out for you a little better than the Monday.
It just depends on the week.
Okay. All right, well, we'll stay by your then. Okay, we're moving along and almost on time. So we're now on adjourned. Fifteen.
A second.
Motion made by Elizabeth Kay, seconded by Christopher Edgar to adjourn. Any further discussion from council? Any discussion from public? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.